Okay, welcome back, everyone. We were in executive session. We're returning to a regular meeting of the Hastings and Hudson Board of Education for October 22nd, 2025. Welcome back. We are going to begin this evening with our single presentation, which is by Dr. Semansky about data and evidence review. I'll let you tee it up, but just basically, this is sort of partly a follow-up from a lot of the questions that came from two meetings ago. When we looked at a lot of the data that the district collects, like Panorama, and we sort of wondered how it all fits together. At that time, we identified some gaps, and I think the presentation tonight is probably looking at what the structure of that cycle, the ideal structure of it is, and what we're trying to get to. So, I hope I said it right.
Thank you. So, yes, this is listed tonight as a presentation, and that is for the opportunity to make sure that we have that up there. This is a continuation of what I introduced during our last Board of Education meeting. And so, I won't go month by month, but I will revisit some points that I made, and the intention is to make sure that there's some conversation amongst members of the Board, just reactions, and then, again, taking into account anything we should be thinking about as a system. So, I'll open by saying that this data review cycle is extremely important in terms of looking at academic performance and also looking at academic progress. I will say that it is absolutely the right thing for our system to be focusing on, and I'll also add, just as a point of information, that it is connected to one of the recommendations in the recent Cherry Beckett Audit Report, which I will speak to in my administrative comments. So, on a high level, when looking across, looking around the data review cycle, we are thinking about the whom, and so, the whom involved is the leadership team. The department chairpersons are represented in the cycle, the team leaders, the E N L department. You'll see a special education department areas for data review, M T S S teams, teaching faculty, counseling team, psychologists and social workers, especially around the social emotional learning data, building leaders, and the diversity and inclusion coordinator. So, in terms of the whom, that's who we've incorporated into this data review cycle, and the idea is there are some folks, some constituents, that really need that first glance or a more specific glance, and then also, it has to make sure, we have to make sure that the data are making their way to the people who are closest to the work, so that it's both systemic and it's boots-on-the-ground actionable. In terms of the what, thus far, we've taken into consideration the State of the District report, and that annually is including academic, social emotional learning data, and behavioral data, and we know that we have lots of refinement to do around the collection of social emotional learning data. The NICE SLAT, which is now going to shift, though, because there's been recent guidance around WEDA, which I will speak to in my administrative comments, so that will need to shift in our data review cycle based on some recent guidance that we've received. The Renaissance STAR Academic Screener, which is currently administered grades K through eight, three times a year, and the Panorama data, again, we have made great strides in making sure that we are very specific in scheduling that. And then, local student data, so thinking about marking period data. And I'll just add that our middle school and high school are digging into grading as an area, and there is a strong intersection with grading and also the student data itself. So, grading practices to make sure that the local data, the marking period data, are such that you're not comparing apples to oranges, really working to strengthen coherence around how departments are grading, if teachers are different, for example. So, that work is happening at both the middle school and the high school level. Last time we met, I spoke to a consideration that is front and center for us, which is, within the context of all of this, we really need to be critical about our progress monitoring tools. Do we have enough for the type of data that we need? And arguably, we want to make sure that form follows function, meaning if we feel like we are missing some data, we need to make sure that we have progress monitoring tools or practices that are in place so that we can capture whatever is missing. So, we may have to make some shifts in terms of what we have for progress monitoring. So, there is a concurrent process that's happening right now where we are looking at M T S S, our multi-tiered system of supports, and thinking of more discreet, smaller measures to gauge student progress, because sometimes it's not one jump from a screener to fall to winter, for example. It's, if there's a concern, and we put targeted interventions into place, what are we using to make sure we're really specifically monitoring those things? So, as we evolve with our progress monitoring tools, and as we strengthen our protocols around all of this, we'll be able to make some shifts, and obviously, this is a first go and in final draft form. So, I don't want to lose the thread. At the last board meeting, there were additional things that were discussed, and so, we do not currently have, in the cycle, the reflection of future steps. There was a question around A P data and whether or not that should live in the cycle. There was a question around Naviance that one of the trustees raised, and then also thinking about, when we have all of this, and the example was used for Panorama, the question was raised, well, how are we then using that for intervention purposes? So, again, back to that progress monitoring, what's being used to really get a sense of program or get a sense of culture versus what is being used specifically for intervention, and how do we then move students? So, that's sort of a high-level overview. I won't be redundant with what you can see visually, but I'd like to invite discussion, reactions, and additional thoughts that we can be thinking about as a leadership team.
Thank you, Melissa. So, opening up for comments, questions?
Melissa, thank you so much for really digging deep into this and putting this fantastic graph together that is so well-organized and so that we can see when things are happening and when stakeholders are reflecting. There's really so much in here, and also, thank you for being transparent about what is still not in here that is being worked on currently.
And we are still in discussions about the when and the how, because time is a really valuable commodity. So, some of this can happen at grade-level meetings, or team meetings, or department meetings. Some of it can happen during leadership retreats over the summer. Some of it can happen, the State of the District happened at a Chair Council meeting. We reviewed it this year. I've done some roadshows with faculty meeting discussions. I actually just recently did a rotation with the Renaissance STAR. I started this at Hillside. I still have more to do with it, but popping into team meetings and actually showing the full complement of what's available, working with the region to figure out, organize training around the applications, and would that live in a faculty meeting? So, we are still, so we are in the process of implementing. So, we are in October, and we are actually in October, but we continue to think about, as a leadership team, the when and the how, because time is very precious, and time spent on data review is time well-spent. Also, it's typically the same structures that are being used to move other strategic goals.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry, Catherine. I'm sorry, I missed two meetings ago, so maybe this was covered. I know one of the, and maybe it doesn't exist any longer, but I know one of the sort of pain points for parents with regards to data was that various screeners that align children for additional support, they would have lag, right? We have, that support often wouldn't start till October, November. Do we have any view into how we might consider closing that gap? So?
Yes. So, one of the things that this data review cycle affords us the opportunity to do is if we have eyes on the, if we have better eyes on taking a look at things at certain points in time, we can identify students much earlier to be able to scoop them up. So, for example, if we are analyzing the Renaissance STAR data in the spring, right? We already know, for example, if a student is moving from fourth grade to fifth grade, who we need to start keeping an eye on so we can start the intervention process earlier. And obviously, we take into account staffing and who's in need of urgent intervention, and the connection between a student's local data, their grades, their STAR, their state assessment, and being able to triangulate all of this gives us the opportunity to get ahead of it and say, okay, this is our cohort that we can look at now, close, close eyes, and let's see if this was just a moment in time, or if this is a pattern, and let's look across these different data points. So, being able to do this more systemically and strategically allows us to get in faster for interventions.
Thank you.
Thank you for this. It's really excellent, and it's so clear. I did have a question, and I know this is sort of your internal work to the school with the teachers and affect the students, but the one piece that I think we're missing a little bit is the parent piece, and I know that so often at parent-teacher conferences, I would love to sort of have a rich conversation about how they're doing in terms of the teacher's beliefs, but looking at that STAR diagnostic and looking at the change over time. Actually, I just asked my, one of my children's teachers for it, and they gave me this really lovely in-depth report that I hadn't received in the past, and it was really helpful. It broke down learning strengths and weaknesses, and it occurred to me that, I actually didn't have a full understanding of the STAR, maybe the last time I read the report on the assessment portal, but then seeing this more detailed document helped me, and I realized that maybe we can bridge that gap, because then it can also help with that home-school learning connection that I think families need to know more, so they can help and support in productive ways, and really understand the power and potential of these assessments, how they're used, and why they're used.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Thank you.
David?
Yeah.
Hello?
Yes. Yeah, thank you for this. There's a lot in here around the Panorama data. Can you just remind us when you're planning on?
Yes.
And are you still planning to do three this year?
Yes.
An update on that?
Yes, so. So, Panorama number one is scheduled for November 5th, number two for February, let me just correct myself here. Panorama two is for February 5th. Panorama three, with the exception of seniors who will have it earlier, is June 4th, because by then, many go to their internships.
All right. And they're identical, right?
They are identical, yes.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Is there a discussion of working with the, I guess, I think it's Janice's job, in terms of like the Equity and Inclusion Coordinator and our equity audits? I know that's something that has been asked for numerous times, and it was wondering if, and maybe this needs to be done in partnership with her, but having that be part and parcel of the review cycle as well.
I don't know if the other board members want to chime in. We had viewed this as an update and a discussion, so a chance to talk about key issues. When you look at data and evidence, obviously, one gets into how quantitative to be or not, and I'm actually proud that we have begun to disaggregate the data and do that publicly here in Hastings. Not a lot of other districts are doing that. I do know Dobbs Ferry is doing it, and talking to the superintendent there, they actually then went relative to their achievement gap, and they set measurable numeric goals to achieve. Now, I've been around long enough to know that numbers can get gamed. I'm not saying Dobbs Ferry and Ken will do that, but my, I'm old enough and far away now from, I can say in Chicago and Cleveland, as a grand officer, I was watching some gaming in two wonderful districts. So, I get very nervous when it's only a number, but bored. Let's talk a bit about what might you want to see here in data and evidence, because I think the qualitative matters a lot, the quantitative matters a lot. My bias is that what's that portfolio of growth? You know, there should be multiple inputs, and Melissa and I have talked a lot about this, and we have some set of measurables now, some metrics, but we have to look at others. But here's the narrow question, to what extent are we comfortable with some particular numbers we would point at as outcomes?
Can I, you know, I find sort of the step before that step also more, perhaps more interesting, if it's not too abstract, the work that we do identifying things that actually have a mechanism of action. We did this, and it actually worked. I love the idea of workshopping those things before we get to like an actual goal, because to your point, if you just have the number, there are ways, whatever, I mean, you don't really know the efficacy of how you got there. I'd love to see us try things and see what actually works, because a lot of times in education, I think it's hard to think that certain things are going to work, but like I'm sure you've seen, a lot of us, there are certain times when things actually work, and you're like, wow, that actually made a difference for children, it was actually efficacious, and so I would love to see us sort of take that first step of diving in, prepared to be, perhaps not everything is going to work, but we're going to try and see what does.
No, I'll just say, I think we're fortunate, in a way, that Fordham University is known for training its leaders in inquiry models for continuous improvement, and I know that Dr. Semansky's been trained in that model, and I think soon-to-be Dr. Waldeck has, is also trained in that model, and I think it's about creating a culture around data and learning data, both qualitative and quantitative, so that you're comfortable discussing it, trying it, testing it, making mistakes, trying again, and it seems like we're incrementally moving to that culture, and that's what I liked about this, is that data is part and parcel of every month and all that we're doing, so it's beginning to sort of become a part of us. I do know districts that do benchmarking. I think benchmarking can be really helpful, but I also think that we do have to caution against it, because then it can become something that becomes scary or worrisome, rather than like, we're all professional learners together, and we all want our students to do well. We want to grow as colleagues. How do we create that culture and climate?
Yeah, well said. Anyone else?
I hear you, Bill, in saying, if we are focusing on the numbers, are we not creating a holistic picture of growth of the students, and are we comfortable with that? And I think to Alex's point, it's a first step, and we do need anchors, which are numbers and data and standardized test scores, but they're different standardized tests, so I think that that's helpful, that we're not just, you know, looking at the state test or, you know, for middle schooler, but we do need some standardization, we do need to accept some standardization and, for benchmarking, like Catherine said. But what else, I guess, down the road, the question becomes, how can we create a holistic picture of progress or lack of for each student?
Yeah, and I think that's the right question, and the conversations that I've had thus far with our, specifically our building leaders, but with the leadership team in general, is that data is very helpful to the extent that it's able to move the needle for children. So, it's, there's a, there's a part of it that, when we look at data, there is a systemic approach to be able to keep an eye on things in general, but when it comes right down to it, the whole point is not just to say we're looking at data because we believe that looking at data is good, it's like making sure we're looking at the right things, and if we don't, I think we have the right things, what would the right things be? And so, to the point raised earlier, it's around establishing a culture where data's really helpful to guide inquiry. We have really smart people doing really excellent work and are wholeheartedly invested in children, and do we have the right information to be most efficient and effective in doing that?
Can I ask you, Melissa, you know, do we ever look at the other side of the same coin, which is, you know, I think in my experience, we've had teachers who, whose techniques work really well with students, and maybe other teachers who don't work as well. Do we see that, oh, you know, this class is really, this cohort is really succeeding. What is this teacher doing, like, let's call it data, what are, what techniques, what are they, what's their structure? What's working, and do we look at that side of things ever?
So, it's a great question. My experience has been, to do that really well, people have to feel very safe to show their data to each other, to muck around in best practices, to know that there are opportunities, and I feel very strongly that it's an acknowledgement that everybody has individual strengths, and it's how do we then say, this is working really well, and this person excels in this thing, and this person excels in this other thing, and how do we then synergize all of that? Which is why I feel so strongly that intervisitation is really helpful, and collaborative lesson design is helpful, because that creates conditions where people are in it together and they're collaborating, and actually, that's what the research shows, this idea of collective efficacy. It's like the power of the group is a mobilizing force to make things better. So, we are doing that with our middle school ELA inquiry right now, so there's an intervisitation protocol that's been designed, and being able to have eyes on practice, when I had one of my committees previously, we did do that, and people were nervous initially. They were nervous. Having someone have eyes on your practice and provide feedback, especially people you respect and care about, it's very vulnerable, and what you want to do is make sure that you're creating a sense of safety in service to children. But it's interesting, it's the adults need to feel safe to do that, and they have to understand, and even if I'm involved in an intervisitation, people have to feel safe that it's, that's not an evaluative structure. We're here, we're in it together, we're here to see what works, and how incredible. And we did start having some of those conversations even at Chair Council. Some of the data that I presented in State of the District, you didn't see demographic disparities, and there was a moment.
Right, of course.
And it was curious, and people said, well, that's really interesting. What's happening there that's different than in other spaces? And the instinct is to say, oh, well, it might have just been the cohort, it might have been the year, it might have been the test, it might, but really, it could be any and all of those things plus practices that are moving things differently. So, it's, it's an exciting opportunity, it's a puzzle to unlock. I look at it as a brain puzzle to think about, what are all of the reasons why this could be happening and to get curious about it? But there does have to be a culture that's safe to really be able to talk about, well, why is this group doing better than this group? What's going on there?
Thank you.
So, there are different charter models that have built their models around these, creating these professional, safe cultures around data and learning. One of them is uncommon schools, and Paul Bambrick-Santora, I can send everyone the link, you know I love to send you readings, called Driven by Data, and it's a lot of how you use data to really inform instruction and to empower teachers around their process and their work. So, it's something that we could look at and study as well.
That'd be very interesting.
Because it's really interesting to see how they do it, but to Dr. Semansky's point, the cornerstone of it all is these professional learnies, learning communities built on trust, and it's faculty feeling like we're all in it together, and we trust each other, and we're a district that trusts us, and the board, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, I think we're moving in that direction, but it takes time.
That's interesting. Love to see that. Thank you. Anyone else? No?
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Semansky, thank you very much. Thank you. Moving on.
This is very helpful, by the way. I'm excited about it.
Our students are hard at work. Ella Walkin, welcome. We're going to move on to student report, so whoever, whoever's teed up to go first, feel free.
Okay, I'll be more brief, so Walkin can talk about the other topics. So, starting off, this Saturday is the Halloween Fun One. It's a one-mile loop course, open to kids who tell students and generally everyone. So, you can dress up in a costume and run, and it raises money for our schools, and I highly encourage it, because I did the color run with my friend last year, and we had a lot of fun as I was wheezing, so she had to drag me up the hills, but it was fun and a nice memory to look back on. Also, the Halloween Parade for Hillside is next week, and where they show all the costumes that the students wear, and that was one of my favorite times as an elementary school student, because I got to see my parents, and I waved to them, show off my costume, so it's always wonderful to see them, they're always so adorable. Also, next Thursday is the sixth graders are having a field trip to Boundless Adventures. I also remember this trip, because it was also my favorite, and I think this story started in me sort of being daredevil and trying to go out and do new things, and trying to get over my fear of heights, but it's really fun, especially the zip lines. Making its 10th year occurrence, the multicultural book fair is happening from November 4th to 5th for the middle school and high school, as well as November 6th through 7th for Hillside. And to celebrate this, a community day celebration will be held at Hillside Small Gym on November 8th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and this includes raffles, author readings, book signings, crafts, and more. And this is such an exciting event, because you could see a lot of representation in the books they offer, and also, NHS students are able to sign up for service hours, so they can help out with the students, or setting up, or trying to get everything sort of mobilized. So, it's honestly a great opportunity for both the kids who are buying books and NHS students. An update for our science research, so senior final papers are due next week, as well as WESF registrations are happening. So, for the past month, seniors have been working on their projects, whether it's data analysis, results, or overall writing their papers. And so, while we've been working extremely hard, our deadline is coming up, so everyone's maybe a bit stressed trying to get this done, but it's so fun to see it all come together, and it's like a whole year's work just coming into this paper that we get to write ourselves, so it's exciting, stressful. And then also, finally, I just wanted to hope everyone had a wonderful holiday, whether you celebrate Indigenous people today or the volley. So, if it was like, for me, I just had a nice break where I got to catch up on homework, but it's very interesting to hear about the culture.
Well, thank you.
Okay. So, down in the middle school is our production of the sixth and eighth grade musical school, Rock of Ages. It's going to be showing this Friday and Saturday, and everyone's super committed to the process. Actors have been meeting for weeks to prepare. Behind the scenes, the tech crew has a mentor that they're reporting to, learning how to run the show efficiently. It's a really huge commitment. Every member is balancing their academic and theater commitments at the same time, so we really encourage everyone to show up and support them. Also, today, we were visited by the Jose Limone Dance Company, founded by Mexican choreographer Jose Limone. He's credited for creating the Limone choreographing technique, a modern dance style. The dancers were amazing, everyone was super dedicated, and they even taught us some dance moves, too, in the audience, so that was a lot of fun. So, yeah, on a more serious matter, Ella and I met with Dr. McCursie last week about the serious concerns, issues raised during the public comment section last week about Dr. Stewart's resignation, the curriculum during the school regarding countries and communities that are mostly unrecognized, the importance of hiring and keeping teachers of color in the district, and really, most importantly, the student and administrative perspective on race. And we just wanted to make super clear that it should always be on the same level, that level being that it is of the utmost importance, that importance that everyone is recognizing it. We want to talk about this meeting for a couple of reasons. It's a process that's starting now, hopefully, it's going to continue, and we want to let everyone here know, everyone on the board, people watching from home, that we, as student liaisons, we have this responsibility to represent a student body that's frustrated right now, really, really frustrated, and some have claimed underrepresented, and it's our duty that we're going to relay information back and forth, we're going to collaborate and work towards an end goal of improving on this issue, so that hopefully, next time, students can come up here and talk about how much we've changed and where this issue is at right now. So, to give a quick rundown of what happened at the meeting, obviously, Dr. McCursie was there, Ella and I were there, but Mr. Clayman also joined us. He talked a little bit about how incidents are handled in the school, like the one brought up here last time during the public comment section, about how, about the faith that students need to have in teachers, the faith that teachers need to have in students regarding these types of issues, maintaining confidentiality, and reporting these incidents is one of the main things we touched upon. We talked a little bit about the hiring process. Obviously, the school can't hire teachers based on race, but learning about what we do to make sure that the hirees who come to the school and who are going to stay at the school really have in their mind that race is something that they need to be thinking about when they're teaching here, is something that we talked about, and we touched a little on Dr. Stewart's resignation. And we'll end, I guess, with a little bit of athletic stuff. Fall sports season is coming to a close. Mr. Wendell has sent out emails regarding modified JV and varsity winter sports, but that's all later down the road. Right now, it's playoff season. All their teams, all teams starting their playoff runs, getting their opponents, match times, home or away games, locking in for one last week of practice, one last push for their sections, so super, super exciting stuff. And shout out to Carla McKinnon, senior captain, holding team together with two goals, two contributions to goals in varsity field. contributions to goals in varsity field hockey's two to one win over Byram Hills. On Low Huds List, she's got over 31,000 votes. So that community engagement is amazing. So, thank you.
Joaquin, thank you very much. Would also note that the girls soccer team is going to have a home playoff game, which is a rare occurrence here. It's going to start at 2:00 PM next Tuesday.
Wow.
Yeah.
2:00 PM?
2:00 PM. Because we don't have lights, so we have.
Monday.
Oh, it's Monday, I'm sorry.
Monday.
Monday.
Monday, 2:00 PM?
Monday, 2:00 PM. Against Rybrook, I think?
Such a great.
I think they play Ry. Ry, I think.
Ry? Okay. Blaine Brook is Ry, Ry is Ry?
No, Ry and Ryenbrook are separate.
Okay. Well, now I made a real hash of it. Nobody knows who's playing.
Well, Blaine Brook or Ry.
Blaine Brook.
Yeah, Blaine Brook.
So next Tuesday.
I'm sorry, it's next Monday.
Next, next Monday, varsity soccer, girls.
2:00 PM.
2:00 PM.
Yeah.
Burke Estate.
Home, Burke Estate, be there.
Be there.
Yeah. Ella, Joaquin, thank you very much.
Can I ask a question for our students?
Of course, yeah.
If a student wanted to come up to you to speak beyond the public comment, how do they access you to voice their concerns regarding some of the topics that came up and the topics that you're talking to Dr. McCursie about?
How do they come up to these students?
Yeah, how do they, how do they access our student representatives so they can bring that information to us? Or how do you track the information that they bring to you?
Well, for the most part, in the past, students have actually just come up to me. It hasn't really been formal conversations. They'll come up to me and voicing their concerns. Or sometimes if we have a class discussion, they'll bring it up so then I know what to discuss with Dr. McCursie. I know some of these, most of these classes include English classes where these conversations come up, but generally, they just are able to come up to us and start discussing if they have any concerns.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You also have a path in the student union, you're reporting back to them and the student, you wanted to explain that a little bit?
Yeah, there are, well, at the student union, we do hear things from the student leaders there about what's going on at each grade level from all the representatives. And also on the student union classrooms, we, we actually talked about this a bit during our meeting, there's like a forum where we can, students can report incidents that they've been seeing. And a lot of the times, if they're going to report something there, they're also going to tell us before.
I thought it was, it was really great to hear from the students last week. Not great in their content, but good to hear their voices expressing their feelings. And some of them talked about potential for a new course that was more inclusive and representative. And maybe I should be asking the administrators, but I assume you probably know as well, like, what's the process to getting a course approved? And what is the role of, of student input in that process?
I don't know much about the process of a course getting approved for teachers, but I do know like some groups right now, they're advocating, like they're telling, like they're telling club leaders, officers, like affinity club, for example, they're sending out forms saying, what classes do you want to have offered next year? And also Ella and I have been looking into like student-made presentations and lessons that can be presented in class as a way of engaging like the, the student body in that aspect. We, we were talking about this at the meeting as well, that one of the best ways that, you know, we can work at this issue is, is giving students a sense of control that they, that they're able to work and, and make progress in the school rather than just saying that we're going to handle everything and you're just going to trust us and by the end, hopefully we'll get something to you that, that you're satisfied with.
And I can't find it at the moment quickly, but there is some policy suggesting the, the flow where teachers issue a proposal. So that can come, that can be generated from a teacher or it can be because there's been interest from the students. And then the teachers generate the proposal and then they, the next discussion is with the administration. And so that, that moves things forwards too. And just as we're talking about all this, I want to thank you both for sharing what you shared and for also taking a stand to be able to have agency in partnership around this work that we're doing. It occurs to me that both with the course proposals and with anything that you are encountering in terms of sounding boards, it's really important, goes without saying, and I know it's already happening, but it needs to find its way to the building administration quickly so that there can be action. And yes, we have to continue to have these conversations, but we also want to make sure that we're being prompt and taking action on it too. So thank you both so much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Moving on to superintendent report from Dr. McCursie. This is an update with district highlights. If you want to call out specifically, or put it on the big screen?
Yeah, it's on the big screen. It's a little awkward because I have to look this way and talk that way and we'll figure it out. And Ella Joaquin and I do not coordinate at all, but I'll, they're much more verbally adept, so their words, I have to put pictures with the words. So some of what they featured, before I go there, Dr. Zemansky stole my thunder because I want the board to be clear, it was Ella and Joaquin who reached out to me after the public meeting. And they said, Dr. McCursie, we meet regularly, it's really important though that in our next meeting, we dig into this issue. So we looked at the calendar and they said, that meeting's too far away. We need to meet sooner. And I said, what if I include Mr. Clayman? And they said, yes, please. So they really deserve a lot of credit. And the nature of that meeting for me wasn't just a one, I can tell there's energy and a real sense of things. So I, this is really powerful for me when across the state, there's not total enthusiasm for having student liaison board members, but this is an example, don't grimace because I'm about to compliment you, that this is why it's so important. And, and this has been here a long time in Hastings, so we know how to do this. And we understand that I don't ask you ahead what you're going to say, I want your voice, right? Only thing, I did wander over and say, please talk about the meeting because I was so impressed with what you, you do. So let's keep that going in board, you know, please keep engaging. And I know the students will reach out to you. So the look-ins that Melissa D. and Kara put together, it's a chance just to, again, to bring life work into Wali. It was mentioned, it was really important, our district was closed on Monday in recognition of, of that significant day for many of our fellow residents, certainly in Hastings and also in this entire region. Again, this is posted, you can go and look at it, the photos are wonderful. I want to compliment Kara Tumayo for the quality of the photos that are now surfacing on, on the website in, in all kinds of ways. Then at the middle school, the look-in was related to LGBTQ+ and this month is so significant. Let me just say a little thing, months are fine, but it's got to be 365. Months are okay, but if it's not tied to larger woven in attention to whatever that topic or issue, but particularly as we think about cultural issues. So I think in Hastings, yes, we have the months, the recognition, we've got to push it deeper and, and right into the core and fiber what we do year round. But you see your wonderful examples of what's been happening in, at FMS and this is also District 1. Now, this is looking back a little bit. We are cautious, believe it or not, about featuring any one student, but this type of accomplishment with an essay really deserves attention. So there's a lot of words up there, I think you can read them, there's a link to the essay and that's quite, quite a significant recognition. And I think it's thanks to, since so many of our students, by that time, they hit late high school, as you know, because many of you are parents in the district, they've, students have been here a while. So many, many educators, teachers have contributed to the ability to, to bring down that, that type of award. And I'd argue peers, peers matter a lot, to be supportive and nurturing and, and tackling this type of challenge and do it so well. Now, a little announcements, I think that Ella and Joaquin spoke to this. So make a real effort to get to theater, we've been talking a lot about athletics, but this is a town of art and performance greatly. Now let me stop here for a second. Monday night here is a public forum meeting, a presentation about where we are at this point in terms of the work on Prop 3, that's the athletic fields. I have already seen the presentation, gave an early look to the board, so you have it. It's a very good, clean, tight presentation. Maureen's been working very actively with Triton, particularly the LA group, that's the engineering firm dedicated to the work on fields. And then LAN, I'm going to meet tomorrow with Rob and some other members of the Student Athletic Committee. We still need to get a, a work group together on this, but we, we want to get out to the public. So we're doing that, that's starting Monday. We bumped the time a little later to 6:30 in recognition of, of the girls varsity soccer game. We, we thought it'd be a little odd to be talking about new fields and we weren't allowing any members or fans or participants of that to, to be here. So I, I promise you a, a good program, it'll be a discussion, plenty of time for back and forth and interaction. So I, I would ask people to be there, we will livestream it and we will tape it. And we certainly will have one or more other such, such sessions. But there's a lot of work underway, a lot of progress to report. Let me be super duper clear, we go out to bid for the actual product. In this meeting, we'll talk very much in detail about the specs you as a board looked at last spring and we'll talk about where those are relative to building out the bid process. Maureen, do you want to add anything right now on at this point? Did I hit it all? Okay.
Bill, how are we letting the larger community know about this event?
Well, we're pushing it out in a variety of ways. Melissa and I have been working on that. We do probably need to reach out to the village to see if they can help push this a bit through their communication, but we'll give it a go. But we've been, we've been trying, this week, starting to try and push it. And we, we are meeting here, not if you're trying to arrive at 5, parking's impossible. By the time you arrive at 6:30, parking should be fine. And we're technically, we're able to run this room a little more easily. So, but we'll do one down at the community center. We'll, we'll move around.
So we should have a letter in the dispatch this Fri- we should have a letter in the dispatch this Friday about this.
Thank you.
We should, I'm not sure it will happen, but it does say in the letter, 6 to 7:30, so we need to emphasize that it's 6:30 to 8:00. I'm just wondering, I don't know how easy this is to do, but I wonder if we could put a sign at the five corners.
Great point.
At the intersection of like Broadway and Farragut and all the other streets right by the food town. Yeah, I didn't know if.
But can we program that sign in front of the school?
Say, say that again?
You can have that sign in front of the school?
Yeah, no, we, we can program it.
Yeah, we control.
Sign in front of the school?
You know, like there's the electronic.
The digital sign. No, we should definitely, I was going to say that. We should definitely put it there, but I think maybe something very public. I don't know how easy it is and it's, we only, don't have a long time, but I just realized that people see that.
The only thing you could do is do a flyer and bring it to the community center, potentially.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Because they, they have a lot of people.
Well, I think we could put flyers at the community center and actually around town.
Sure.
I mean.
Or the library, usually it used to be the library.
But we got to do, I mean, it's already Wednesday and.
Okay. We'll have, we could print something out.
For the weekend though, that would be useful.
We'll put Bill down in the corner.
But for going forward, I think at the five corners, like I noticed the rec basketball thing there.
Yeah.
That never used to get done.
Like a sign, yeah. We should also try to use, I mean, now that the enterprise, not the enterprise, the dispatch is back, I think you can list upcoming meetings in it.
Yeah, you can.
Like, that's a good, I mean, a lot of people do read it, so if you list meetings in there, that's another way we can potentially advertise things.
I think to Catherine's point, I think it's, it's important that we get it out to the community, to people who don't have kids in the schools.
No, but in there, they list like the meetings that are occurring within the village for each town.
In the dispatch?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's like you list your board meetings or whatever meetings you're having.
It's true, we could have put it in for this Friday.
Well, thank you for putting the letter in there. It'll get in.
I think that people see.
I bet it will.
Yeah.
I'm happy to give out some flyers over the weekend, so if you can coordinate something with board members, maybe we could each take 20 and give them around the community. Plus, you know, our student members. Just kidding. Sorry.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll coordinate with Melissa D. on that. And I am meeting tomorrow with Rob and a few of the members of the Student Athletic Committee. And they've been a real engine room on this, so I can also talk with them about.
I mean, students could actually go around in town, I think, and at the train station. I think people would be more receptive to students coming in wanting to put up a flyer than.
Rather than that.
So, all right, so we'll work on that. And I, there are a few more slides here, multicultural book fair, I mentioned this in the last report, but it's just a reminder, this is, I think it says it's year 10. So this is emerging, it's quite an important tradition here in Hastings and it is a wonderful source of, of great reading material. And, and the three buildings do coordinate quite well on making sure students have an opportunity to get through and into the, into the book fair and including moments where students may come upon books that may have some challenging topics. And we, we try and work with that. In my mind, that's, that's high quality education. So.
Is this open to the community as well?
Yes.
And can we put this?
If you want to maybe Melissa can explain.
Advertise the community as well?
We'll make sure that we advertise when it's open to the community.
Perfect. And on a related note, because I know we talked about this last year with the budget and bringing in our local community, is it possible to give away some free tickets to Rock of Ages, the community center for the, the older members of our community who are so supportive?
I, I think we can.
Sure.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, for many years, it was free and then there was a change made, so I mean, you know, may want to reconsider.
I know, it might be worth reconsidering because it really is a nice way to invite all members of our community into our school so they feel part of it and invested.
Good point.
On that note, we do have the senior citizen dinner again this year in December.
That's true. And, and not to be left out, the Harvest Moon Festival, another great event to support the music program and, and have a, have a nice fun evening. And then of course, Hastings rec basketball. All right, so we have all kinds of activities summarized here on this list. And then November 4th is when we, we next gather here. And that meeting will include a lot of discussion on the bond. We'll have the multiple architects and engineers here providing updates. We'll weave into it the field update from the 27th. It'll be, I think, very valuable meeting as to where we are at this point. Maureen and I have been meeting quite regularly, we're going to outkick it every other week with the, the key body on that, because even right now, we've got to pay attention every day, are we getting the work done? So we don't have delays. So we, we are, and Maureen, if you want to champion it in terms of standing up for us, it's Maureen. So, and that's a very complex process and, and we're, we're fully on it at this point. And I want to thank Maureen and Joe and others for really leaning in. And I do think with the construction managers Triton and it's critical we have their work to help keep an eye on all of this. Right?
Yeah, I was already getting extremely stressed.
Yes. So, all right, so that's my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. McCursie.
I'll add that on the 4th, I'll also share our literacy review document that we received. And there will be a proposal around science of reading, next steps for professional learning, so I'll mention that as well on the 4th.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Dr. Zemansky for the report on curriculum instruction. I know there was a piece you mentioned in the data review that you wanted to pull out, so...
Yes, okay. So, the board meetings thus far this year have been focused on state of the district, curriculum updates with a focus primarily on mathematics, but the curriculum review cycle work that we've been doing, the data review cycle. Well, I mentioned science of reading, we'll have that discussion next time, but I did want to provide an update on the work that we're doing related to the Cherry Beckett audit. It was brought to my attention that there was just a question around where are we with that? And it's really important that we make sure that the public knows that we have been working tirelessly behind the scenes. Credit Dr. Janice Mateo Toledo, who has taken a huge lead on partnership around some of those audit numbers. And also Wendy White, who is at the high school, she's serving as an administrative intern, so she's been working diligently behind the scenes in support of the work that Janice is doing as well. So I'll provide a very brief update on where we've had movement thus far. There is a link to the final report, and pages nine through 13 outline what our recommendations and our management action steps were outlined and the deadlines that were associated. So we are making very good progress. So the first is around number three, where we said we would explore the possibility of an anonymous reporting hotline. So we did speak with, beyond our leadership team having the discussions internally, as indicated, we did speak with neighboring school districts throughout the region to learn from their experience. There are a handful of school districts that are using an anonymous reporting process. They're either using Google Forms, anonymous alerts, and some pivoted to Sandy Hook Promise and indicated there was like a year and a half waitlist to be able to do that. So listen very carefully to the wisdom of colleagues who did identify some key benefits, being able to collect information. However, they all expressed serious concerns that were not minor, so I wanted to just outline them, and that did inform our decision to do better with our reporting processes, but not to accept an anonymous reporting approach. The concerns that came across the board was that it was hit or miss with having enough information to be able to investigate, which was actually a concern raised internally by our team, too. So if something is being reported and you can't follow up with someone, if you need additional information and it's not there, you're sitting with this lump in your stomach, essentially, that you know there might be a problem and you can't do something about it. Hearsay reports rather than credible incidents in some cases, tendency to receive what the buildings are already investigating, expectation of 24/7 availability to respond. So they were indicating that when things were coming through middle-of-the-night holidays, that people were being called to action very immediately. With certain applications, they were escalating, the anonymous reporting repository was escalating to the most severe response. So if they couldn't reach the administrator right away, one colleague had shared that police were sent to a home because they couldn't reach an administrator, or a student was hospitalized. Like, they jumped with one of those applications to the most severe interaction. They had reports going to the wrong school, difficulty triangulating information, many false alarms, and there was a pretty significant impact on leadership culture around incidents and how they were being handled and being able to make sure that they're doing that well and efficiently. So I did have a subsequent conversation, which was really informative, with members of the IWG, and what I heard back is having that reportable, that reporting form now fillable, we did take that recommendation from the IWG audit, if you will. That was one of the three documents. So I want to thank them, that's been very helpful. So it's streamlined things. The reports are being acknowledged now with a receipt message to the families, so when the building receives it, so it's not going into a vortex, it's received. Upon conclusion of an investigation, families are now going to receive a document to communicate the outcome, that the investigation has been concluded, the extent to which there was a finding under DASA or the extent to which there was a finding under the Code of Conduct. We've also strengthened and standardized our data collection protocols as it pertains to incidents, and I did receive some feedback around the need to refine the form itself, that it would be really helpful to have more space to actually create the description and some other key details. So I will be following up with our leadership team. We continue to wish to move the needle on that, and we've decided against the anonymous reporting approach, but we are leaning in to other changes in reporting. Number four, following discussions with the diversity and inclusion E&amp;L coordinator, administrators, and professional learning community, we're partnering with Arburn, our regional bilingual educational network, to identify professional learning opportunities that will be provided during the March Superintendent's Conference Day. So the professional learning community is already building that into our Superintendent's Conference Day structure. The data review cycle was recommended on number five, so that's been established. Key identified staff will be regularly reviewing disaggregated assessment data with a lens on proficiency and growth over time. Number seven, policies number 105 and 4326 have been scheduled for review, and that's with the policy committee. Just as an additional note, New York State's joining the World Class Instructional Design and Assessment Consortium. That just came through from the state. That was what I mentioned earlier in the data review cycle. So it's an important shift, it impacts our English language learners. The final administration of the NICE SLAT will take place spring 2026, and then the WIDE screener assessments will be implemented beginning in fall 2027. So I can speak to that more as we're underway with that, but that's new guidance for the state, and that will be reflected in the policy considerations as we're doing revisions there. Number eight, we've started moving the needle on gathering information. We've collected bilingual, multilingual staff district-wide, so we know the languages that are being spoken. We've begun analysis in terms of our hiring practices, who's coming in, who's coming out through a diversity lens, so that's in motion. A central repository housing minutes and status reports from the diversity committee's been created. So again, I want to thank Dr. Mateo Toledo for her partnership on this. We've been working hard since the start of the school year, and we still have things that we need to do, and then that's one of the three audits, right? So we're triangulating all of this. But I did want to publicly report out what we've been doing and what's changed action-wise.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Zsmanzki. Any questions or comments?
And you might have said this, Melissa, the development of strategic and tactical plans, that was one of the findings, right?
Yes, so I believe if I'm remembering, is number, that's number two, which I see is tied to number one. So there have to be some decisions that are happening that will impact strategy, structures, roles, responsibilities. So that is front and center on the radar and a tied consideration.
Okay. And then, I guess, just on that hotline, the anonymous reporting, because if that was a finding that they considered a high ranking, but, you know, your evidence and your reviews of peer districts and everything is kind of giving you a list of why not to do it, how does that, you know, how does that get resolved, let's say, from the finding?
So that's, so the recommendation was to consider it, and when we went back in, when they give audit recommendations, context matters, and also living in the district matters. So for example, recommending the data review cycle, we're saying, okay, universally, we want to do that. The purpose, even through our conversations, was really around strengthening reporting protocols, and so if what we're seeing is that's not the ideal approach, what is a much better approach, given that we want to make sure that we are moving forward? We said in our management response, again, I'm just doing this from memory, we said that we would consider it in partnership with leadership team, discussions with neighboring school districts, and we did, in fact, execute that.
Gotcha.
So we're acknowledging, like they were acknowledging, this is an area to focus on, and what we've come away with is it's not our preferred approach, given what we've been finding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a way to bolster up an anonymous reporting system by having parameters within there saying that this will not be investigated if these things are not listed in the report? I'm a big proponent of anonymous reporting systems. I think that they're helpful, and I think that certain students and families won't report if it's not anonymous. So I wonder if there's a way to state on an anonymous system, saying, if you're not listing whatever the report, whatever the report may be, you know, location, time, parties involved, then we can't investigate this, thank you for your report. Is there a way to do something like that to help with the audit, and if it's a high recommendation? We could think about it, I don't need an answer, but I think that if there are issues and students are afraid of retaliation, or they just don't feel like coming forward, but if they did it anonymously, they might say something, but they need to know that this information must live on this document, or we really can't investigate this.
Yeah, I mean, I think these are all good questions. I think the audit raised things to get considered. The question, and I say it respectfully, is how deep did they go in looking themselves and examples in school settings where it worked? And I think we can try and dig a little more deeply if we find some school districts where it is working. We've had moments here where people have run anonymous information to us, and it gets, it's, at one point in one case, was a very long list, as we then tried to probe it and understand it. Most of that were things we already were digging into, which is one of the things that Melissa flagged, but also, our hands are sort of tied then. The other thing is, I don't like to talk about past districts, but Weston had an anonymous for a while, and we had to make sure we had administrators on call, and that can be very important, and it also then is one more thing an administrator has to do and spend time on, because if you have an anonymous system and a certain type of call comes in and it's not picked up, that's really a terrible situation. So I think what we could do, if, you know, we could, you know, dig a little more deeply, Melissa did dig deeply, so I just know that, please. To me is where is there a school district that's making this work and is reasonable? Because that was a pretty thorough list of concerns and questions, but we can maybe, you know, look in a little more.
Yeah, and I'm thinking less a call, but more like a Google form or an email address that's monitored, something like that. The call system, I don't think the district's large enough for something like that, but something that's monitored in a way that, and I'm thinking more of like DASA and bullying, you know, accusations.
So you're thinking more, so more of a form-type of approach to a call line or a hotline or a...
Yeah, and you can have those forms email you when something comes in, and then you could review it, and you could say, not enough information here, or, Dave's joining, something like that, where, you know, someone's monitoring. I would think that if it's under the parameters of bullying and DASA, it would fall under the Assistant Principles as the DASA, something like that, something to think about. I think any additional incoming information regarding bullying, I think would be important to hear, especially when we hear from the students about it.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Moving on to a report from Maureen Carbal, business official, I guess some construction updates.
Yes, so I'll just try to summarize it, because I know Bill already spoke to some of it. In terms of our bond process, as Bill said, we've been holding, we've held a few meetings so far on the progression of the bond, and we did make a decision that we need to meet more frequently, because as things are progressing, there definitely becomes a need to meet more often to ensure that we're all kind of hearing the same information in a timely manner. We, as you know, we are hosting that community forum on Monday to provide the update on the progress of the fields. Additionally, the full design team will be here at our November 4th meeting. One of the key items that the district is expected to receive next week is the first budget prepared by the construction manager's estimating team. So the budget that is used pre-bond that gets us toward referendum, this is how districts do it, is based on a conceptual design, but as that design advances, I mean, that's why there's so much contingency items, and as we looked at the budget as it was presented, you'll see there was both design contingency, because it's not so much as a construction contingency, saying that as the design progresses, you know, things may change and become more expensive than initially thought, because they don't have to the level of the existing conditions and all the information to bring it that far. That's why, I mean, we are comfortable with where the budget is, but I say that, that this is an extremely important step, because they cannot continue beyond that until they have the budget numbers. To understand, like, in the direction they're going, because obviously, the budget has to be adhered to first and foremost, so as an example, things are just kind of already coming up, you know, this one item, oh, there may be some, we have to do some testing here or there, we need more borrowings here or there, you know, all I hear is, you know, ching ching and all the rest. So that is going to be, it's good that we're receiving it next week, so by the November 4th meeting, that will be something that I'm sure the construction manager will share with the board in terms of where we are, and there's a budget prepared, and then there's a reconciliation process that needs to occur with the construction managers, the architects, and the engineers, prior to bringing it to you. But again, to stay on the schedule, we need to have that first crack next week, and then it will be shared, some of that information will be shared at the November 4th meeting, and again, we'll continue to provide updates as the work progresses. As far as the Farragut wing progress, we meet weekly with that team, and that's been the case for some time now, as that work is, you know, getting closer to the end of substantial completion. We also, I also met with the Boasys team this week, because in addition to the construction, there's new technology in the building, new technology closet, new PA system, security systems, Wi-Fi, all the rest that has to be coordinated. So that's also being coordinated in conjunction with the existing schedule for construction, and we anticipate that to be late November, early December. Another key part of the process has been, we went to a faculty meeting, I can't remember if we recorded that at the last board meeting, but Bill and I went to the faculty meeting to meet with the Farragut staff, and we are, I did start to meet with, oh, I'm sorry.
We're just, sorry, we're looking at board, Dave. He's very sick.
You okay?
Hi, Dave. Hi, David.
He looks so sad.
He does look sad.
Oh, okay. So we have begun now to meet with smaller groups, I began to meet with smaller groups, Farragut middle school teachers, I've met with a few today, a few earlier this week, and, you know, we're really now trying to ensure that we're providing, most importantly, to our teachers, really clear communications to discuss classroom utilization, office layouts, specialized learning spaces, classroom layouts, classroom needs. These conversations will continue until we re-enter the building, and this way, as we, we're not having any delays in terms of what the needs may be, so we, you know, we can make that target date of January 16th, getting back into the space, and just really ensure that we'll be able to fully support the staff and students upon their return. Oh, and then the last item, which is, I'm just going to report it out now, but it is under our retirements this evening, but I wanted to just, you know, I figured I'd just use this time to speak to a retirement recognition for Lynn Walker, that her retirement's on tonight's meeting, and I just jotted down some things here. So Lynn Walker has been with the district for the past 10 years. She joined us during a time when the HR office had experienced significant turnover, and she was instrumental in streamlining, streamlining and improving its operations. Lynn brought stability, professionalism, and compassion to her work every day. Lynn is one of the kindest and most humble people we have ever had the great privilege of working with and calling a friend. She worked tirelessly through the challenges of COVID, managing the complexities of paid leaves, and countless other responsibilities with grace and commitment. Lynn also played a major role in our recruitment efforts, personally organizing our diversity recruitment fairs here, the ones we host in the district, and helped strengthen our outreach to prospective candidates. Beyond her HR expertise, Lynn was a strong advocate for the Employee Assistance Program, EAP, and made it a priority to ensure staff were aware of the resources available to support their well-being. She understood the importance of caring for those who care for our students. We could go on and on and on about Lynn's contributions and character. We will deeply miss her, and we're so grateful for all she has done for the district. Thank you, Lynn, for your dedication, your kindness, and your friendship.
That's very kind. Thank you. Thank you, Maureen. Any comments or questions? No? We're going to move on to public comment. If anybody wants to comment, just please respect the three-minute rule. If anybody...
Yeah.
Hey, good evening, just, yeah, just grab the mic. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight because staff members at Hillside wore Turning Point USA shirts during the school day in recognition...
Did you just identify yourself?
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry.
Nene Shinun, yes. I'm going to just start again, Melissa, if that's okay, for restarting my timer. I'm here tonight because staff members at Hillside Elementary wore Turning Point USA shirts during the school day in recognition of Charlie Kirk's birthday on October 14th, which I'd like to point out is also George Floyd's birthday. This was not a neutral act, I want to be clear about that. Turning Point USA and its founder are well documented for promoting divisive, racist, homophobic, and other hateful rhetoric. When school staff wear clothing associated with such an organization during the instructional day, it signals an endorsement of those beliefs and directly undermines the district's stated commitment to equity, inclusion, and belonging. Allowing staff to wear those shorts throughout the course of the day and to be seen by families at dismissal signals that exclusionary, harmful beliefs are not just permissible, but part of what is normal here at Hastings. For many families and children, particularly those from marginalized community, it confirms a painful truth that they already feel. Belonging is conditional, and they can never fully belong here. This incident cannot be brushed aside as an isolated event. Calling it such is frankly tone-deaf and offensive to those who have been begging the district to take a bolder and more accountable action on issues facing our marginalized students and families and staff. The incident reflects a deeper cultural pattern, one that I invite you to make the connections about when we're thinking about our widening achievement gap of Black students and English language learners, our chronic absenteeism, particularly in our upper buildings, and even the district's decision not to opt in to the New York State Universal Free Meals Program, which cost us nothing. Each of these choices, taken together, reveals a system that too often overlooks the needs of its most vulnerable students. So I ask you all tonight, why are we not meeting the basic human needs of our students? Educators of color like Dr. Tesfus Stewart have cited systemic inequalities as a reason for leaving Hastings. So when staff publicly align with organizations known for hate and face no accountability, it is an example as to why we cannot recruit and retain staff of color, as seen again in the recent resignation of Amanda Rodrigo, who is not only a beloved educator, but is highly qualified by having a dual certification in E&amp;L and special education. Research consistently shows that educator bias, whether conscious or unconscious, affects expectations, grading, discipline, and access to opportunities for our student. So this is not an issue of just policy compliance. It's about our... It's about our moral and professional responsibilities, because educators hold tremendous influence of, over how children see themselves and others. When their visible choices promote hate, the result is not neutrality, it's harm. So I'm asking the district to do three specific things. That's one, immediately take corrective action for the teachers involved, including a teacher improvement plan or tip to address potential biases, a transparent public statement acknowledging the harm caused and outlining the steps to repair it, and empowering Dr. Mateo Toledo, our Director of Diversity, with autonomy and adequate resources, be that budgetary, to lead a district-wide professional learning on bias and symbolic expression and belonging. Our students are watching, and they deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to business items, this is a moment we're going to pause students, I know you have a lot of work to do, end of the quarter's coming up, so feel free to make your exit if you choose. Moving on to business items, are there any questions or comments regarding business items one through five? Nope? Is there a motion to approve business items one through five?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Moving on to placement services for C S E and C P S E. Are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve our placement and services for C S E and C P S E?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye? Thank you. I don't think David can, at home, can hear us. Oh, okay.
He just, he just...
Sorry. Sorry, David.
Does he know what he's voting for?
Just keep raising. We'll let you know. On personnel, we have a consent agenda with our appointments, amendments, retirements, and resignations. Are there any questions or comments regarding our consent agenda? And thank you again, Maureen, for that very kind comment about Lynn. No? Is there a motion to approve our personnel consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
I have to add, I, Lynn Walker was the first person I met when I came to this district, and I don't want to be redundant, but Lynn is such a special person, and everything she has done in her role is from a humanistic perspective, with deep wisdom, with deep confidentiality, and absolute dedication to the district and to moving the district forward. So I would also just like to recognize and thank her personally, professionally. She's been an excellent colleague. She's become a dear friend, and I wish her all of the success in her retirement.
That's lovely.
Thank you. I totally second that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Melissa. We did vote on, oh, we did vote on consent, right. Moving on to minutes, these would have been from October 7. Are there any questions or comments regarding the minutes? No? Is there a motion to approve our, approve our minutes from the October 7 meeting? So moved.
Second.
Second, thank you. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Moving on to policy, this is just a FYI update from the policy committee regarding, I guess the meeting was last week, I forget who's on it now.
Yes, it is Maureen, and David, myself, as well as the administrators. I've been selected to report back for the group.
Oh, thank you.
It was really an orientation to being on the policy committee and Policy Committee 101. We had really the privilege of talking to one of the district's lawyers, who really gave us a sense of our roles and responsibilities, defining policy in practice. It was really a helpful meeting.
Excellent. I think you set the agenda, sort of, for the year to come?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
No.
We set the agenda for the year.
I heard, you know, hearsay, so.
Good for you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on to second public comment, there's nobody. Going on to agenda review, just looking out, so it's going to be November 4. We're going to have a budget calendar, initial update, and then also a bond update, I guess. And we'll just, I mean, we talked about it, we're going to reserve space for an executive session as well that day. So Dr. McCarthy, is there anything you want to add from there, or no?
Yeah, the bond update will be quite substantial, because you'll have, Maureen, how many, we'll have the whole crew, right?
Yeah, it'll be at least five people, I would say.
Triton and L A group.
Triton, L A, P B D W.
Yeah.
All right, so bring your questions.
L A group, and LAN, right, so.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll be careful not to be too redundant regarding the field one, but we do want to, it's all part of the piece, and some people may not have been able to get to the Monday night, so, but that'll be quite substantial, and obviously, the budget calendar's quite important, too. The exec session, we wanted to give you an early look at the tenure class, and we've kept bumping it because of all the other items. So I think we want to make sure, if you agree, Melissa, we don't bump it out of the 4th, but, Maureen, you look like you have a different idea.
Well, we do have two people that are due for tenure in January of 2026 that need to be...
We need to do that.
So, I mean, you could split it, I would say, do the people that are...
At least that.
Yeah, so we'll be ready to be, we can do it, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm just, I know, I'm just thinking, not that now we're speaking out loud, just thinking about, because we did start out the conversation, and then I went back to check the tenure schedule, and because of just sometimes the way people's leaves are and all the rest, there were two people that would have arguably been tenured last year, but I say that because I believe, like, we need to notify them, because typically the tenure, even the appointment of the tenure happens two months prior to, you know, for the individuals, I mean, also, so they're aware, you know.
Yeah, so we'll make sure the exec session on the 4th...
I think on the 4th you have to have it, the two people.
At least that. Okay.
Maybe one's January, one's like spring.
I think we can get it to work. There was a heavy lift today, so I think there'll hopefully be a lighter lift on the 4th.
Okay, thank you. Open up for board comments.
Just that the board, we have to come up with a date for our second board retreat, so we can work on our goals.
Yes, line up, line up our calendars and...
All of our...
For sure.
I just wanted to, and I'm sure it's in the works, but for Monday, a lot of questions have come up around PFAS, right, and the requirements and digging into, because we know it's not, it's not allowed in manufacturing, so, but there were a lot of different nuanced questions around PFAS, like, from the prior session. So I think that would be helpful to be prepped for.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, and I think, being they've been with us, I think they're aware of that, and I think that's why I think this, it's a better way to hold the meeting, because it allows for, no, this structure doesn't really allow for the ability for them to answer, yeah, so we're hoping that this will be helpful to people to be, and then, you know, again, we could, if things can't be answered, we could bring that back at a...
Yeah, we'll have it, right.
But I think they're well-prepared for that conversation.
I mean, I will point out also that same team, Triton, same, same product probably was installed in Artsley, so they have a lot of familiarity with, you know, they're well-placed to answer our questions, like, in a real way, so.
Yes.
I think it'll be useful. Thank you.
Has it been announced to the community that Joe Epstein is now the F M S?
Like, a week ago?
Like, in an email that was announced?
There was an email that went out.
Yeah. I just wanted to, is this the first time we have a middle school SPED coordinator?
No, we've had all along.
Oh, and she's now moved into...
Department chairperson.
Department chairperson. Okay.
Yeah, department chair.
Got it. Okay.
Well, Jean, I mean, she's sharing it, but I think she'll be able to share, she, just, for transparency, we can have, like, have the different titles and how they...
A new organizational chart?
It's a new, we have an organizational chart, but we, they've created one that's just as special, so it's extremely clear to people what each position, what's the difference between each, what's the reporting structure, how they, do they work together?
That's great. When will we see that?
It's, it's already done, I think it'll be shared, right, next time?
We can bring it to the meeting on the 4th.
It's like just hot off the presses, and, I mean, it existed, but it's much clearer within the structure SPED with, and then a little bit more details, because sometimes I think people are like, what's the difference between the chairperson, the coordinator versus, you know, the assistant directors, and what are their roles, and so it's done.
Yeah, I, I mean, Jean's not here tonight. The last couple of days have been both very focused on particular students in the larger system, which, which Maureen's speaking to. She has scheduled right now some 20 meetings already, looking out with SEPTA representatives, larger sets of special ed parents and groups, so she's really making an effort to be present and visible. That 20 includes everything from coffees to pre-coffees to monthly conversations and all the rest. You know, so we'd had a conversation with the leadership with SEPTA, we can circle back on that, but, but Jean has been very active, very present, and I am also quite pleased with, there's a burst of energy represented by a lot of the people you tonight voted to appoint into seats. People have been sort of waiting for an opportunity for an open seat to take on, as teachers, you know, that coordinator role is a leadership role. So, you know, very pleased with, you know...
I even met with Joe as, in his coordinator capacity with Brittany in regards to the Farragut wing today, so he's already jumping in there.
You know, and Brittany, if you know Brittany, and I'm using first, just incredible sense of expertise, student spirit, and all the rest, so that, and the fact that we went with, you know, with two coordinators for now at the high school, that was the level of interest, you know, somebody newer who's really, you know, impressive.
A newer senior staff.
And a senior to pair that together. So I think we're rounding out nicely the sense of being there for our special ed families, and I keep insisting to the principals, assistant principals, and everyone else, that every student is our student. And, and, and right now, with some transitions, we have to be extra attentive, and, you know, it's, so we're working on it, and I, the org chart, which we'll get to on the 4th, we wouldn't give you an early look ahead of that. I think it will help, I think it should give you the structure.
Makes it clear. And they're also still working, but it's, that's in conjunction with the high school, with bringing in, like, it's under the Schedule B, it's a learning facilitator in special ed, which is basically a teacher that helps, works with her colleagues, especially because we have so many new special ed teachers in the high school, that we've had that position in our contract for many years, and, you know, different years, it's, there may be more need for it than others, and it was a recommendation of providing some support, being that most of the special ed team is new. So again, it is different, again, from the coordinator, it's different from the chair, where it's a colleague that would work directly with their colleagues and to help with this coaching and things of that nature, so that, I think, is in process, too. It just hasn't been felt.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Teresa. Anyone else? No?